All right, it's 5:00 PM. We're gonna go ahead and, um... All right, we're gonna go ahead and keep our work session off. I guess I'll ask Ben Skinner in the room, so I don't know. So Coach Hubbard, wanna open us up a prayer tonight?
Let me pray. Lord, thank you for the opportunity you've given us here tonight. Lord, we would just ask that you be with our leaders as they conduct business. Lord, just continue to be with us through this relation cycle. And I'm thankful to be here with your son today. Thank you.
Amen. Thank you for that. All right. So we'll go ahead and get into it. First on the list is David Burrows with B-Tech to discuss the casino phone system.
Thank you. And people from Shindon.
All right, so did we look?
He was here working on them yesterday. But we're waiting on it. What for runner? For instance.
So were you able to locate a current contract from then? Were they ever give you a contract?
I have the contract. I mean, I have the grant from Shindon.
So can we get a copy of that as well?
It was in your last, last... Oh, ladies. Thank you, yes.
Okay. And also, so you said you had an, um, you had a quote for who?
We are waiting on a quote from Forerunner, who is, who does need children support.
Uh, and that's the only one that you have so far? Or we already sent a couple?
We're waiting on that one because we've used them before. They were the ones that we had, or two, for Shindon. They were the ones that we had.
Were you able to reach out to anybody else and get any other quotes?
I don't know if anybody else does this as well as they do, but we can do that.
Okay.
I can search for two more.
All right, I know. I thought we already had one. I guess that's my mistake. I thought we already had one.
Just having to agree what we have now and what we used to have and compare them to see exactly what we need to, where she gives us a quote on.
All right, next on the list, Allen Sanders to discuss the infrastructure on Third Street as it relates to sprinklers in the building.
Hey, I'm just here to ask for the city of Dallas to mention infrastructure on the Third Street properties, which is 100 through 106. It's a steel strip mall on the library. It's got the thrift store, some of the finances of other properties. We bought it a couple of years ago. Spent some time cleaning the place, which was in fairly bad shape. We also did some cleaning around the railroad where the N S had left 20 years of debris up along the tracks. Cleaned all that up before the library had paid out a dumpster pad at our expense. And we've started the process of remodeling the buildings to open for businesses. So as I've been working with Mike in the fire department, due to what we're opening, we're gonna be required to sprinkle the building, which is fine. We have historically sprinkled the other buildings we've done downtown, and we don't have any issue of sprinkling the building. But the issue we run into is that particular parcel of land is landlocked. You have a state highway on Third Street, it was at 148th, and that the state will not allow us to cut. So they want us to tunnel underneath the road, install a 12-inch sleeve and run the water line. That goal came in around $60,000 to provide a water tap for the sprinkler system. We looked at the other street coming off of Main Street, had to go on the railroad, so that's kind of not an option either because we can't tunnel under the railroad. Which left us, the only final option would be to start on this corner of a strip of property that the city owns, right behind the road that circles the library. It's a narrow strip. It runs all the way to my property line, which is the fence that we fenced in. So that quote for that water tap and that water line would be forty-six... $46,700. And then from that property line, I would be responsible for running the fence, the water line, the last 300 feet, 400 feet, which would be about another 15 grand, to get water to the back of the building to the sprinkler system. So what I would be asking for is could the city provide the water tap infrastructure to get the tap on the main line? And I don't think they'll have to dig up Broadway. They'll be able to tap the main line out of the little strip of land that the city owns.
Allen, is it that there's not enough pressure?
We've already had this. There is enough pressure. We've already had, we've already got the drawings, so the not having water kind of took us by surprise. So we've already got, I've got a complete set of drawings for two of the buildings on the sprinkler system. Um, we haven't, haven't done the other two yet, but we do have complete drawings on two of them. Uh, and there is enough pressure there to run all four buildings from a high level. Uh, as there is on the other, but it's just gonna be $60,000. Plus, we've got to dig up the parking lot beside the jewelry store, a stasis, uh, which I'm not sure who owns that. We'd have to dig all that concrete up to get the tunneling machine to tunnel underneath the state highway. So, uh, the fixing of parking lot is not included in the 60 grand, but it's just the tunneling underneath the highway and to the back of my property. So, uh, not sure how to go about it, but we might ask, is there a process we can get the city to provide the water to the property line, which would be our fence if you stand it behind the library?
What is your timeframe, um, that you're requesting, is Allen?
Um... Next week. How quick can it go? Uh, we're well into the process. We've already got drawings approved for one of the, one of the businesses. Permits have been issued. Fire departments approved the sprinkler system. Uh, we just submitted the sprinkler system to, for the other building. I have not submitted the final building plans to Mike yet, but they should be approved. So our goal would be to have those two in, those two businesses operating by fall of next year, we hope. And then the other two within another six, eight months.
Remind me, I was just gonna say, remind me again. What's, what are you planning on, what's going over there?
Um... It's, it's gonna be for... The little building on the corner is kind of triangle shaped. It's gonna be a gourmet burger shop. Currently, there's a hair, uh, hairdresser haircut in place that is part of our agreement. We're about to properly remove her until she retires. The next one's gonna be a $600 barn. And then the big corner one is gonna be a, uh, sex house. Uh, and then we fenced in the two acres in the back, and I submitted plans to the city. We're gonna have a 16-by-30 stage building, like a big, big real estate, covered roof, all the entertainment. And it'll be a joint liquor license where you can walk around that two acres and we can have live music and go in and out of the different restaurants, all within our fenced-in property.
Allen, how much help are you trying to get? Or you want, or you want?
Forty-seven thousand dollars.
That's what you want the city to pay?
Yeah.
But it, but isn't it a utilities board issue?
It is a utility board issue. Uh, that's the game of the quote of the forty-seven thousand dollars. But I think historically, y'all provided some infrastructure of the larger businesses. Publix provided water and stuff, and then through some grants or whatever, so... Um, you know, from investment from our side, we're gonna probably put somewhere one, 1.2 million dollars under the strip home, uh, which I would hope will pass at some point.
I think isn't Brian Cash the person that you're gonna handle this for us?
Yeah, he already, he already submitted a request for any 702 stuff or...
Not Brian. I had talked to some people about it.
That's what me and you, I was telling you, we had to do, give Mr. Cash.
I don't need your approval first.
Well, we, we need, we need to have Brian help us, help you construct a request to make sure it passes the tests. Um, I don't know how we initiate that.
No, yeah, basically Brian is our advisor on things like this. We're not the experts.
But we work with most of our projects, I'm Brian.
Yeah. So you'll need to, um, yeah, you'll need to submit something to Brian, but how is he doing about Shannon? So do we look when in first and then, you know, you don't have to get with when?
Hey, I would even be willing to go another route. If you could get the utility board to provide the water tap, I'll provide the pipe and the labor.
Yeah.
It's just the forty-seven thousand dollars.
Yeah, but it's still... Yeah, it's still though, just from the council standpoint, that's just the route that we have to take. We have to, um, yeah.
He's our incentive expert when it comes to that stuff.
So I just need to get Brian Cash and tell him.
You don't have to get with when, if they're when, um, yeah.
And then we'll get a request of Brian to analyze it afterward, looks at it, and it doesn't, it, it doesn't sound.
I, I would say historically, when we've worked with Brian, it's taken months and months, if not years, to get things passed, which I understand it takes a long time. But I'm kind of at the point, I don't want to invest any more money if we're not gonna get a water tap, right? So, you know, at some point, I gotta make the decision to stop spending money. Because I don't think the city, at least the fire department, will let me over about it. So we're kind of getting to the point where, you know, if I'm filed over with Brian, can we do this in an expedited manner or can we take?
Just give them the answer. All y'all get together.
Yeah, but we still have to start the process, so we don't know how long it's gonna take. I mean, hopefully it does it, but we still have to get with those to even start the process.
I don't think it sounds like a complex issue at all. So hopefully Brian can just give the cash.
I don't know. I agree on it. It's complex, but we're still waiting on another. We've been waiting two years now and haven't got a resolution to it yet. So I don't think it's gonna drop out over time, and that's kind of what I... This one needs to be moved through. But I think we can.
We could ask him to hurry.
Yeah.
We could ask him to hurry.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Thanks, guys.
Sounds like a great question.
Yes, it does.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, next on the, um, next item on the agenda, Madison likes to discuss their special events. Likes to for Noble Park on November 1st, 2025. Hey, Madison, how are you tonight?
I'm happy. Uh, yeah, just wanted to host my third April fall fest with Ben and Ben Chuck at the Noble Park.
Okay. So, um, have you already completed the event form, the special event form? So Shannon, she has all of her ducks in a row. She's done everything she needed to do? All right. So do you guys have any questions? All right. I don't think we have a problem with as long as you've already completed that special events form and you've done everything that the city clerk's office has asked you to do. Do you have any questions for us? Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you for doing it.
All right, next on the, um, agenda, Mayor Jim, I have to request a budget amendment for GL010-511-41090-0000. Regular pay to GL010-511-41091-0000. Zero temporary employee pay in the amount of $6,480. This is to hire a temporary secretary from temp force due to Cassie Emerson taking a medical leave of absence for at least four weeks. So Mayor is, so Cassie's on medical leave?
She's on medical leave. She's scheduled for surgery on the 12th of this month, and it's gonna be a minimum of four weeks.
Okay.
Five, so I have to stand a little bit closer if I have to spend on the, come up with the surgery.
Okay, so this, this $6,480 is the amount that you came up for four weeks?
Was that not four weeks, no? The thing is, I would pay it.
It's for eight weeks.
For eight weeks?
Yeah, as a just in case.
The agenda says at least four weeks.
Yeah, at least four weeks, but the amount's for eight weeks.
At least.
As a just in case.
This is minutes. And next one, we don't know yet.
So are we going off? What is the pay rate then for this?
Pay rate is $15 an hour for the person.
And this was $5 more for, because you're going through temp force, 20?
Twenty, twenty-two. Yeah.
Who's been, I know Mr. Cassie's had some health issues. Who's been answering the phone lately?
I have. And Shannon, Elvin, along with Jane, along with the building code. Like, and Harmony.
But this is for, and you said this is for a temp force employee, is that correct?
It is.
So we just get with them, or they just, we get with them and they provide us some money?
Yeah.
Well, here, I didn't have some concerns, counsel. What, what information will this temporary employee be accessed? What would she have access to, or he, or whoever you've got?
Well, just basically, uh, word, you know, writing letters, correspondence, answering phones.
But they'll also have access to your emails too, right, man?
They won't have any access to any sensitive material at all. That, that is...
I got, so let me ask this. So what about all the stuff that Cassie had been working on at home? Were we able to get all that stuff from her?
Shannon's aware of it, uh, Shannon's aware of it.
So what?
We're working it out. These are executive issues. We're working it out among ourselves. We've been able to do it, but we need somebody at, uh, to assist me with issues in the executive office.
Y'all have any more questions? All right.
Have they already identified a temporary employee?
I don't think so. They're going through temp force, so they can't, they can't do this unless we approve the money for her. All right. Is that it, y'all?
Yep.
All right, next on the agenda is Luann Anderson, accounting manager, to give financial update. You doing all right tonight, Luann?
I'm great. How are y'all?
Good.
You should have in your packets, um, a financial report as of June 30th. And also, uh, well, it's a second financial report, but it's actually like a bunch of status. Um, two pages, I mean, one per each. Are you biting us?
Probably not.
Might be. I don't know if there was yet to...
He said it was two pages, Luann?
Yes. One is, um...
I forgot it.
It was just some figures as of June 30th, and the other one is a bunch of anything else.
There it is on your pad.
Good?
Yes, ma'am.
Fine, okay. Um, the first one is key revenue accounts, and this is as of June 30th. Um, that's the best information. Of course, we just finished July, so I don't really have final numbers for July. But, um, we're doing very well on our revenue accounts. The sales and use tax, uh, budget was 16 million, two. As of June 30th, it was at 12 million, one. And what remains is 25%, which is perfect, because as of June 30th, of course, we have 25% of the year left. Uh, business license, budgeted at 2.2 million and came in at 2.2, just under 2.2 already as of the end of June. Uh, garbage, uh, 958,000, and actual is 697,000, uh, which leaves about 27%, which is perfect. And then real estate, add the lower apartment tax. Um, we're actually a little bit over budget already on that, uh, 885 versus 906 actual. And if you go to the other sheet, uh, this breaks everything down by apartment. And I'll just let you look at that, see if you have any questions. Um, it shows total revenues with 23% remaining, which is good. Total expenditures with 20% remaining, which is a little bit, um, less than we would like to see. We should have 25% left remaining, but it's close enough. And a lot of those expenditures, I'm sure, were at the beginning of fiscal year. Uh, the ones that stood out to me, if you look at judicial, uh, there's only 17.9% remaining. It should be 25%. And I got with Amber on that, and she said there were vacant positions that were not budgeted for. And now they filled those. And she says she didn't have any input into the budget. She didn't understand why they were budgeted, but they were. So that's the reason for that. Um, civil service board, of course, um, their owners spent, but that's...
Hold on, Luann.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. So, so she had, if she were able, how was she able to fill some positions that weren't budgeted? Where did that money come from then? Or how, how are they even advertised? Like, how do we even advertise them or?
Because we have, we have to tell the civil service board that they're budgeted before they're allowed to fill.
Right. We have to show that they're budgeted before they're filled.
And I know you probably, you weren't here, just make a note and get an answer on that, because there is no way she could have filled... She still wouldn't even have had 17.9% left if she filled some positions that weren't budgeted.
Right.
So see how many, yeah, see how many positions she's talking about.
It could be that one was budgeted but not two, or something like that.
Yeah, but she still shouldn't have been, yeah, she still shouldn't have been able to hire for it.
Yeah, okay.
So let's just, um, get a little bit more information on that, if you could.
Okay.
Because also too, that means we need to figure out how did they pay for it? Where did that money come from?
Right.
Because that means somebody's gonna come up short.
Right.
Or some line is gonna come up short, if that makes sense.
It looks like it will, yes.
Yeah. Just make a note, and let's just, um, get an answer on that at the next meeting, please.
Okay.
I have a question about the civil service board. Since they're in the red, there's not been a budget amendment request to remedy that?
No.
It looks like it's already in the negative. That 21,000 in that parentheses, that means it's negative, correct?
Right.
So who's supposed to, um, ask for that amendment? Or explain why?
Us.
HR.
HR.
The mayor's office.
Okay.
All right, so put a note. Well, Shannon, add that to the next agenda so we can see why that is over budgeted and why nobody has requested for it to, um, be paid.
So have we paid that $21,000 to them?
I believe so, yes.
What have we paid it out of that was not budgeted?
Same situation.
Yeah.
Money gone.
And also, Shannon, let's just make sure we're, we're not doing this, because again, anytime somebody is going over budgeted, it has to come before the council. Nobody should be authorized in, um, unbudgeted dollar amounts.
Right.
Or things.
Um, the others were, uh, in planning and building services. You can see they have a lot of budget left, but, um, Mike Whitstone said that that's normal, that they budget based on actual averages over the years. And he said there are projects that just have not been started. So that's why they, they seem to have a lot of budget left.
Also too, uh, Luann, this is good, and thank you so much for this breakdown. Next time, can you, um, separate payroll out of it?
Yeah.
Let's do, I just wanna see what the actual is versus payroll.
Sure.
That's good, I do.
Yep, I can do that. Um, also regarding the 2024 audit, um, it's finished in draft form. I actually have a draft. Um, but they can't issue a final. Um, the situation is if we, if we spend a certain amount of money on federal grants, they have to do what's called a single audit. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it's just another audit process. It's not as involved as what they had to do for fiscal year end, but it's, it's certain things that they have to look at in audit. They can't issue a final until they find out, number one, if they have to do a single audit, and number two, they have to complete it if they ask you that. So I do have a preliminary audit, and it's, he said the numbers probably won't change, but I can't really give them out until, until they say. And I did ask him if he's gonna come and present the final audit to the council, and he said yes.
Okay. And also too, Lee and I reached out to the, um, chief examiner's office, so hopefully we can get an update on that audit, so we can, um, share that with everybody. So that is still happening, so hopefully
Okay.
they can get us some sort of update, so we can see what's going on with that.
And we trust in the draft that they found no issues. It's, it's no significant issues?
No significant issues. Just some, some operational things that we're still working on every day. There was some of the things that Melody is helping us out with, and, um, they're falling on me now moving forward. Uh, just some reconciliations that we really need to focus on. Um, following up on the grants and reconciling the spending on the grants. Um, accounts payable, making sure all that's in balance, those kinds of things. But it's, it's nothing that we can't fix.
No red flags, no material red.
Oh, no. No, no, nothing like that.
So how are you doing with the bank, um, reconciling the bank accounts? So how's that going since Melody is on?
Yeah, I'm, I'm doing all of them now, and, um, they're, they're going fine.
So is everything like, every month, if everything is what it should, is 100% reconciled?
Uh, 99% reconciled.
So how many, I know the last I, I heard, you know, the last we heard before Melody left was like six. So how many now? There was like six, there was like six accounts that weren't balanced?
That weren't balanced?
Yeah.
I would say at this moment, there are two, but there's only one going forward that's a problem.
Okay.
So it, it might just continue to be a little bit, but I'm talking a couple hundred dollars. So, um, all the others are good.
Have you already closed credit cards off? Are we done using credit cards?
Uh, we're still using them, but we're, we're limiting what they can be used for. We're monitoring it very closely.
Okay.
We're paying them off every month.
Right. I just know we're getting close time, duh. Budgets and whatnot.
Yes, yes.
For y'all to get all your numbers together.
Yeah, we'll stop.
Being careful that it'll run over into the next fiscal year and that's something we don't want.
Yep, yep, we'll watch that and make sure everything starts to go right here.
Hey, uh, sorry. So Luann, on this contractual, social, industrial, and economic development?
Yeah.
What is this, what is this, this negative amount?
I can go back to that.
And the capital outweigh, too. There's another negative amount with that.
Yeah, um, contractual, social, industrial, that's, um, we paid a million dollars to Earth, which was not budgeted, and you guys agreed that.
That, that was.
We, we, we allocated budget for it, though.
Yeah, we did. We didn't spend any money without budgeting. Everything we did was budgeted, and we, um...
That was actually interest money.
Yeah, and we specifically listed where it was coming from.
Okay.
It just didn't get parked in the right place.
It's not, yes, in the sprinkler system, it doesn't show as budgeted. Same with, um, 500,000 to help Silicon.
The hospital. So Shannon, we need to, um, we need to fix this, so this isn't showing us in a negative. And we need to, um, make sure that that money was pulled from where it was budgeted from. Because it looks like what happened is the money was paid out of an account that probably shouldn't have been paid out of.
Never replenished from any, doesn't have any source.
Does that make sense, Shannon?
Mm-hmm.
So let's make sure we, um, get this. And also too, Shannon, I know it's, um, I'm always saying this, I know it's time for budget. In these, um, in these accounts, I can't always remember what we can pay out of what, like the, um, gas tax and the hotel tax and all that. When you do the budget, can you make sure we know what we can, yeah, what we can buy out of those accounts? That just makes it easier when we're, um, when we're planning budget, especially with, um, that capital list.
Right. Well, on the, um, capital outweigh, that's the playground equipment at Noble Park. It's the same situation. It, it doesn't show up in the budget in the computer system.
The minutes may be able to help you, Miss Shannon, because I think we said at the end of the meeting, where would we go with the problem?
But if it's not in the original budget that y'all passed for the beginning of the year, it's gonna be a negative.
That doesn't, that doesn't make any sense.
It's their system.
And then, if you don't make that transfer in sprinkler, then it's gonna throw a negative in sprinkler.
So how long will it take you guys to get this taken care of, so we're not showing negative? How long will it take to finish? Luann, you think we can just have an updated sheet by the next, um, meeting? All right.
The good thing is that even with those numbers being negative, and there is negative, we're still very favorable.
Yes.
So that's, that's good.
I know, well...
Yeah, the bottom line is...
Yeah, so we don't need to just be focusing on that. We just need to make sure things are being paid out of the right accounts, so all the line items show the actual, even though we know where it's supposed to be. So just get us a better, um, copy of this at the next, um, meeting, and also, if you can, separate payroll out of this second sheet.
Okay.
And that way we can, um, know if we need to, hopefully we don't, but that way we'll know if we need to make some sort of adjustments at the end of the...
Yeah.
I don't have any more questions. Got it?
I'm good. She, she asked you the credit card, uh, the question, the others.
All right, you got any questions for us, Luann?
No, but I am next, I'm next on the agenda.
All right. So it says, Luann Anderson, accounting manager, to discuss a budget amendment for Alexander Hyde invoices in the amount of $9,967.75, um, from other professional fees to legal fees. So, and we got this in front of us. So tell me, Luann, what, what month is it? Is this something left over? Or is this, because we shouldn't have a PO open?
No, there's no PO. We'll have to, um, if you approve it, we'll add it, we'll add it to the budget. We'll switch the budget, and then we'll do a PO, and then we'll pay it, and that should be it for the year.
But that doesn't make any sense to me, because I thought we had closed out all the, um, the PO. So tell me, what is the, I'm going. Is there a reason why this one, they didn't get it for you?
It, well, the last time that Cassie came in and asked for a budget amendment, um, these, we took care of that, but then these two invoices came in after that.
Or previously rented services, but she actually should know about it.
Right. And one is dated, uh, April 30th.
Yeah, so that's prior. That was before we cut it off, but...
The second is dated May 31st.
But it, but April should have been the last week, shouldn't it?
Yeah. That's when we requested that the PO be, uh, cut off was in April.
Well, not even cut off. We asked, we requested that there wasn't an open PO for
Right.
this specific building.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm looking, can you see the total dollar amount for this May one?
For May 31st, it's, um, you might not have it, it's on the... It was on the backside of the invoice that I have here.
While they're looking at that, I'd like to ask a question, if I may. When?
Sure.
Why would we pay you and Miss Hyde to both look at a termination letter or look at someone stepping down or look at anything? Why wouldn't we just let you do that? And I don't, I'd rather ask them for my own knowledge, I guess. I don't know why we'd have to review someone stepping down anyway. I need, I need a little clarification on that. I need, I need a little clarification on that, if you don't mind, please.
And then there's also like a couple of things on here that says like receipt and review of email from city official employees two week notice. I think that's the thing, that's my, my biggest question too, I just feel like we're paying, I feel like we're double paying.
Double paying her.
No, double paying as far as.
We're paying you to look at this, and we're paying Ms. Hyde to look at this, and we're paying two city attorneys to look at the same thing.
But I think the issue is he's not, it's not being sent to him, it's being sent to this person, but this person isn't a city attorney.
But there's some of this, he did look at, uh, Ms. Nix, I know we looked at it.
You don't look, all I do is just keep up, I don't charge much at all on any of those things.
I, I get that, Mr. lives, but what I'm saying is, I don't understand why we wouldn't just use you to look at those things instead of using you and using Ms. Hyde to look at some of the same thing. You see what I'm saying? That goes back to that, we're just not supposed to be sending anything to her unless it's going through you. You see what I'm saying? I think that's worth the point I'm trying to make.
Yeah, the logic is, is that we should not go around you to an outsider until you, as the inside attorney, has decided that you need additional perspective from someone outside.
Yeah.
But there are certain things, though.
Yeah, I mean, somebody gives her two weeks, okay, give her two weeks, like, somebody wants to step down and go another job, okay, thank you, appreciate the service you did, I, I mean, I don't, I'm not big on paying attorney fees anyway, especially with taxpayers' money. That just bothered me.
Let's see why you.
It ain't your fault, but it just bothered me that we're doing all this, you're our city attorney.
I guess, I guess they called her. But they should've talked to when?
We have said that at the past three meetings.
Again, that final happened after the, the last budget amendment where all this was discussed.
Right.
I, if I could make a suggestion, um, I don't know, I mean, I just wanna know what you guys think. What do you think of us contacting Alexander Hyde? Maybe they'll work with us on this money, on this outstanding amount? Since, you know, number one, the council has said we don't wanna do it this way, and you feel like maybe she and Lynn or Lynn are looking at the same things. She might work with us on it, I don't know, it's a candidate ask.
I doubt it. I think our, yeah, I think our issue is, we just need to be making sure we're using our in-house legal counsel.
Right, right.
And we shouldn't be paying extra unless our in-house legal counsel comes and tells us.
Right.
He needs someone else with some other expertise.
I agree, yeah.
As, as the traffic.
Yeah, that's, that's the issue. Nobody else should be contacting any other professional services on their own. That's, that's the issue we're having.
Right, right, I get that, going forward, we need to just monitor that.
Yeah, well, that's.
Everybody knows.
Or don't pay the bill.
Okay, that doesn't make sense.
Thank you.
Okay.
But also, it, it, it may not be an option, but this can't keep happening.
Right.
Like, this, this, this can't keep happening. And then it will be to the point to where, I mean, I'm, I'm only one person, the bill may not get approved, and then we, if it's not approved, we can't just pay on our own. Thank you, Luanne, I appreciate you.
Thanks, Miss Luanne.
Thank you.
All right, next on the list is Chris Gallops and/or Jody, um, mentioned with the Roosevelt Rescue Squad for discussed reimbursement from city appropriation for a U T V. Is Jody or Chris?
Did I interrupt her?
Ah, I'm on the, just, one of y'all don't come today? You may come up with. All right, any? And Shannon said you sent everything over, but she said she just got it yesterday, so we didn't get a copy or.
I'll send her.
Of the stuff that she requested.
Okay. Pretty much what we're asking is, uh, at the top of that, it shows our current model of U T V. It's a ninety-six Gator. It was great for what it was bought for in the original. It does not suit purposes of what it may be used for today. We took it when the plane crash went out, and it was a scenario. No, we probably would've never got it all the way down where the plane was without taking the chainsaw and cutting the path, but if we'd done that, we could've. Um, so that put us into motion, I think, and maybe we need to upgrade this. I have talked to our chief and the police chief. They seem supportive of it. I told them this is gonna be a vehicle that would not only be for the rescue squad use, but it would also be for their use. So the Cog Fire currently right now has a key to the building and has access to any equipment in there if we're not available. Police department, police chief knows that they have the key. If there's something they need, go get it. It belongs to the city. So, uh, that second page there, there's a lot of question of what our, what's in the bank. So I'm not hiding from you, there it is.
Okay. So. So you're not asking for any additional money, you're just asking for access?
I'm not asking for additional money at all. All I'm asking is, we did not, in what we put on the paper that we were asking help for, our vehicles that went through the shop, they're pretty much, they're going out the door now, they're running. There may be some surprises here, there, and yonder because of a vehicle that's set five years, that didn't do anything. Now you put them on road, you know, you're gonna have surprises.
You just wanted to use left money you hadn't spent yet to buy this U T V.
So what I'm asking is, if we venture out there to buy this, we all reimbursed with what I, what we have left. Some of the, now, we do have a list of some things. We've got, we, we, it, I think, or had, we do have a list that we could finish, if y'all choose not to, and then we would go on our route of figuring it out on our own.
But you're asking for additional funding, or?
We're not asking for any additional.
It's to spend what you have.
You're asking out of the forty-three thousand that we gave y'all to spend out of that, instead of on batteries and, you know, you've already fixed the batteries and tires and all that. You have additional amount left over from.
What I said.
That's what I thought it was.
It was not told to y'all.
It's okay.
That we were going after a U T V.
You know, it's okay, Chris, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to make sure I understand what you're saying.
I don't need more.
No, it's just what he's got.
You asked me last, when y'all, when y'all did that, am I coming back to ask for the same thing? No.
Okay, I just, I just gotta ask the questions I need to ask, so I can understand, that's it. I just gotta make, the math has to math to me.
Not a problem.
All right, so this forty-six thousand, four hundred twenty-three dollars, twenty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents is what's left in the bank?
Plus thirty-nine, that's what's in city, that's what's in certificates.
What's in what?
That, that's the savings.
We're trying to make sense of this, so what now?
Thirty-nine.
Come on, come on, man.
Forty, forty in savings, forty-six.
So tell me.
No, this is our account, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I think we missed the. This is.
Okay.
This is immediate.
Okay.
This is.
Okay, so, so tell me, so.
What do we have from the, from the city?
Yes.
Left? Now, I still have a list of things I could do if I don't want that.
Okay, I think.
I'm letting you know because Facebook went wild with our financial.
We don't, we're not discussing Facebook.
I'm not adding anything.
I know, but stay right there, so we can make sense, I, I don't care what happened on Facebook.
I know, I'm just saying, I'm not adding.
That's why when y'all reached out to me and asked to be on the agenda, yes, I told y'all, I can't make a decision on my own, neither can they, like, anybody. Anybody wanna ask me something, you gotta come and see me in front of my team, and then we make a decision together. So that's why we're here.
We're not asking for any extra.
It's okay.
Spend twenty out of your twenty-eight on this U T V.
Hold on, all right, so, hold on, I, I, y'all, I still gotta make sense of this, can y'all just?
Hold on.
All right, so, all right, so this is, this is the accounts that you guys have, right? So in the account with the city, with the allocation that we gave you last time, how much is in that account?
This twenty-eight.
The twenty-eight thousand. So you're, what you're asking is that we amend, he wants us to amend via his budget so that he can spend the money on something that wasn't approved, he wanted to buy something else. That's what you're asking, right?
Pretty much.
Okay, that's, that's, it had to make sense, does that make sense?
She's good.
All right, yeah, but it still had to make sense.
I didn't say that, I mean, I went.
Then if it's our, our safety departments, it's not. It'll help the fire department, police department, everybody.
There's more numbers, I got, I even got that, there's another, that's running around twenty. This one has a skid unit in it, next one, it's a skid unit, there's private skid units put in.
Okay, so now.
So do you wanna find those things out of your twenty-eight?
All right, the only thing is, um, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to treat you like, we still gotta treat you like we treat everybody else. So now that we're on the same page, and we understand what it is that you're trying to do, we need to see a quote. We're gonna have to see a quote for this. We need to see a quote for this, and we're gonna need.
I have, we have not actively pursued one, because we didn't know where y'all were going with it.
Okay, so next time, anytime you wanna come, as long as I'm sitting up here, everybody knows you gotta, you gotta have something on there. So, but I'm gonna ask that you have to. So get two quotes, so that we can do a, um, price comparison, and then we can make our decision. All right, thank you. Does that make?
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Y'all look aggressive, didn't you, Chris? I say y'all a little aggressive, didn't you? Well, we got, as long as, we just have to understand, thank you, though. All right, and y'all fit with that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so next on the, um, agenda discussion, um, section fifty through eleven agreement for services and updated title six policy for transportation. All right.
This is just the mayor deal of our transportation. Through, it's, uh, I don't know.
Okay. All right, next on the agenda, Steve, matched to discuss, um, construction contract with Emily Brooks and son for the pickleball basketball court project. Hello.
How are y'all?
How are you tonight?
Pleasant. So as y'all know, bids are in, um, this is the contract that y'all have to approve from the mayor to sign to actually get started moving dirt and building the pickleball basketball. Mr. Wynn's looked at it, he had some questions with Ron Coleman, they got together, and it's been sent to Brooks and Son as well. So we just need y'all to allow the mayor to sign it on behalf of the city.
All right, so I was getting, you guys have any questions on this?
No questions.
Thank you, Steve. All right, next item on the agenda, agenda is Michael Weiss with E E F S to discuss the contract to resurface Boat Dock Lane. You doing all right tonight, Michael?
I am, how are y'all?
Good.
Are you gonna budget some pavement during the mayor's segment, or right now, or? However, I need to. We need to right now, I told you. Okay. Um, so on the, on that item in particular, Boat Dock Lane, it, it's been a real struggle to figure out how to fix that road. I mean, we've, we repaired the, the second bridge going into Lake Howard, and it, it has no weight restriction on the bridge. The first bridge going in has a fifteen ton weight limit restriction. So finding, uh, finding some method of construction that can fix Boat Dock Lane and, and not charge the city arm and a leg, because they gotta bring reduced loads in, has been difficult. But, uh, some of the, the surface treatment, chip seals, and what we call tar and gravel, that was done under some of our pavements, all of, of that construction was done with single axle trucks that are at or, or below that, that fifteen ton weight limit. So just kind of just throwing ideas around, hey, we're struggling getting something in budget to do something out there, could we do this? And I don't have a, I don't have a contract per se, but I think just talking to different contractors and, and looking at budgets, that might be something that we could get proposals for. It would be under the hundred thousand dollar threshold for the public works bid law, where you have to formally bid it out. Um, and I didn't know if the, if the city wanted us to, to look at that, or there's absolutely not, and we're gonna pave the road, fix it, like we've done everything else, and it's gonna be more expensive than, you know, a, a different project.
I like, I like the first idea with the tar and gravel you just talked about, with a hundred thousand dollars? Cause it, cause getting over that bridge is what's gonna be the, uh, hard part, don't you agree? I mean, we've said that forever.
Yeah, I, I, I've looked at, you know, different options of trying to get over that bridge with legal, you know, legal load limits, and I, I just, I've, I've, uh, not found a way to do that.
I know that.
What is the lifespan if we go that route? Well, how long are we looking at for the last?
Yeah, it, it's probably, it's probably not gonna be like, you know, resurfacing, you probably hope to get fifteen or twenty years out of it. I'm, I'm gonna say you're probably, you know, you're looking at more than eight to ten, you know? And it's gonna be, so.
That's what you got.
Yeah, it's not, it's not perfect, I will say that, it's, it, you know, but if, if you've driven it.
It's better than even, I think we can counsel, I think we do need to look more into it and just get some hard numbers and maybe get some things in place, cause that, it, it's bad, we've got guys that, and ladies that don't even go out to Lake Howard anymore, because the roads are bad.
I know, and I know a lot of my people like to go out there and fish and stuff, but I know we've been talking about this for a long time, too, and we don't wanna keep just kicking the can down the road and what I was sitting here thinking, I was gonna say what it reads, but we're just stuck there a little more, um.
And I, I've met with Cromer, and we were trying to get with the Cali Lake County and city, if they, you know, that they do some of that work on their own, and is there any?
But we, I think we've already done that, I think we've already, um, didn't we already tried that before, we talked about it?
That was on a different issue, uh, what we're talking about now, if we can ask for help.
So Michael, um. Mike, I think we need to, um, we probably need to just see how much the different avenues are gonna cost us, and then try to make a decision on which way we wanna go, and it'll probably be easier to ask for the county for some help if we got a number. You think so? And we, and then.
Yeah, I didn't know if the council wanted to request some kind of in-kind services from the county, or just request financial, but I don't know, I don't know what, what, what the county's anticipating when that's a bid.
I don't think it would. I guess it depends on which way we're gonna go, right? When it depend, so let's just, um, as you said, there were two different options, right?
Yeah, so.
I think one financially feasible.
Yeah, if, if you wanna do it in kind of the, the, the getting proposals and, and reviewing it, saying, you know, I, I think we can say under the hundred thousand dollar threshold for having to bid the project out publicly. You can get quotes and proposals, and, you know, let the city review those quotes and proposals if it's under a hundred thousand. I think that if, if it's over a hundred, you have to publicly bid it and go through that process.
Well, maybe we should just go that route, and then just ask the county for some money.
Cause it'd probably be a lot cheaper for us to do that now, while the pavement crew is still here, rather than wait a little while, wait a little while, and they're gonna be gone, and have to call back.
Yeah, and, and just, I, I tried to work that out, the, the, there's kind of two separate crews. The crew that paves the roads is different than the one that does this, uh, this type of treatment. So, um, I, I, I didn't get that before y'all in time, and it really didn't occur to me to try, try to schedule that with y'all while they were here.
Okay.
So that's probably what I mean.
I, I definitely like to stay under the hundred thousand, so we can get that done, it's, it's, that's rough, that's rough road.
Yeah, it's not gonna hurt, get, get some.
Yeah, I mean, if there's nothing else, if you get proposals, and the council does not wanna move forward with what they are, then we just don't.
How long you think it'd take you to get that together?
Uh, I would say two to four weeks, I'd probably be able to get it, go back and discuss with you, you want.
Two to four weeks, it might be able to come back and discuss.
We, we may be able to, um, well, Michael, no matter the county helps or not, we may be able to go ahead and, and cover our end, and if they, if they reimburse us some, then good, if they don't, we'll still be fine. So Shannon's gonna check, um, I told her to check capital, and there was other, it was a couple of other, um, line items that we can check to see if we can go ahead and cover the costs. Cause if we're able to cover the costs, we can go ahead and, um, make that decision and get it on the list like they said before the people, um, leave Silicon, especially since that's a pretty, um, decent amount, what do you think, Larry?
I've, I've got another question for Michael. Michael, I may have dreamed this up, but I remember us talking one time, you know, when we had our issues on Broadway of the flooding. I remember us going to take a camera and run under Broadway, in between Broadway and First and Third Street. Have we ever got the proposal, have we ever done that yet?
I've got a proposal to video that.
Uh-huh.
Just a, it's a budget estimate, you don't know how many junctions you gotta get in, and how many, but, yeah, I, I do have one on that.
Where is it at?
Uh, Senate, it's probably been back, I first did it two, three years ago, and I re-upped it this year in Senate, I think, back in March or April.
Who, did you send it to the mayor's office?
Think I could go back and look.
So we haven't, we.
I was mayor, re.
I guess, so we haven't done, we haven't done that yet, though, I didn't think we had, so. Ms. Nix, is that something we can look at at next council meeting, if, uh, get Michael to send that proposal?
Mm-hmm, and, and also too, Michael, would that? Mm-hmm, and, and also too, Michael, would that be considered drainage, like a part of the drainage thing? Cause you know, we got some money set aside for that.
It's all part of it.
Ah, so yeah, let's get that, cause I, I was just, I was just sitting here.
Because if we can, if we can look up under Broadway and then see what's going on there, then we need to probably get with Aldox if we can't shave that crown down a little bit on Broadway too.
Hey, but also too, I know Wood Street in my district is on the list to be, um, to be on the alternate list to be paid because there is gonna be some money left on, but I know Reed and I talked about that, there was some drainage stuff over there that had to be done before, and I think it's like, um, it's like when we first turned on Wood Street, off Five Eleven, like right there at the bottom, he said it was some sort of great crate or something, he called it, something had to be done right there as far as the, um, drainage. Do you know anything about that?
No, no, I, I don't, I'll, I'll look at it and make sure, I, so, if, if we're talking about that, you mind, do y'all have the list?
I don't.
Of what we're, okay.
Now, I also have a question about Sarah Lynn and Bolton. Okay, thank you.
So, apparently, you know, we're under budget on the paving and-
Right, you got it.
Yeah, these are, these are the ones that we, these are the additional two, three, four, six, seven streets that we're kinda proposing to resurface and stay kind of the original contract.
So, you're four fifty under budget?
Roughly.
Okay.
Um, you know, when they finish the, the street, we reconcile everything, we see where we're at, so we're, it's, it's, it's real time numbers that we know where we are, um, every, every, basically every day. And so, these, the first four, you see right there, were kind of on the original list. Um, I will say, Sarah Lynn and S- South Bolton and West Hick- Hickory have some, it has some drainage issues that are kinda a little bit beyond just resurfacing. Um, so, th- those probably, uh, those need to be done, but they're gonna cost a touch more than, than what you would typically see for resurfacing a road. And then the other, I tried to get with Cromer and discuss kinda other just maintenance issues throughout the whole city that he was having and those, those are kinda the other three that were added to that list.
So, so on this, Sarah Lynn, Bolton and West Hickory, do these prices reflect that extra-
Yes, ma'am.
Sort of, the price reflects it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Alright. So, yeah, just add, um, add Wood Street to your list to check, cause, um, and Cromer, I don't know if you know or not-
This, this is the first one on that that I have, I looked at the drainage.
Yeah, and I, and I could be saying it wrong, but I know it was just like right there when you first turn, you'll see that little, where the water drains. Cause I know it floods some of those, when it rains heavy, it floods those houses.
Okay, what is that, coming off Wood or going on?
We've been coming right on Wood after Five Eleven.
I got you.
So, yeah, those houses get a lot of water, the ones that are right there to the, um, with. Alright, well, this makes me excited, um, I got another question, do we need to, um, do we need to approve this list or?
Yeah, I mean, this, this contractually, I suppose, with the contractor, there's no change in, in payout on the project, same payout that I've previously approved, if y'all wanna approve it and, um, I don't know, that's, I think that's the city decision, y'all tell me.
I think-
But it's, but it's already in, it's already in the project is, is add, is add items if there's money to-
There, there are one, uh, not add items, there are, there are original quantities set up and some of those hatching, resurfacing have not been fully used and those quantities would basically just be applied to these streets.
Okay, and also too, Michael, I know you were, I don't know what the dollar amount is, um, just let us know if it exceeds it and then we'll just figure out how to cover the, um, the additional. Hopefully, we don't have to, but we don't wanna take anything off this list.
Okay, so you're completely, tell the contractor that they are good to go.
Yeah, y'all-
The only, the only thing I will say, contractually, they, they may ask for more time because obviously they're adding mobilization of additional streets, so for that one.
And that's okay, we'll just continue to tell people to pardon our progress.
Okay. And just an update, I don't know if, uh, so we're in the Taylor Estates area. I'm gonna ask a little bit, that they're hoping to be done with most of the streets, we're committing by Friday in there and they'll be out. Then, I think the only thing, there's a few areas that we'll like, um, these alternates, one and, and then, uh, Pleasant Ridge area, gotta get those completed and we got a patch, I think, on Dogwood Circle that came up with utility board after we paved it. Um, so that's, that's, it's about, there's eight streets, but really, there's a really small streets that should go pretty quick, I think, in the next, next two or three weeks.
The addition-
There'll be shraping that comes after that.
Well, the addition of these alternatives, like there's two over in Taylor Estates area, would they leave and come back? Or would, would they stay and do these alternatives now as well?
I need to talk on them. I, I, what their schedule is, I, I feel like they would stay, but I-
That'd be more efficient.
Yeah. Yes, sir, so, um, unless y'all got any more questions on the pavement, I'll, I'll-
We're excited. Thank you, made us happy.
Okay. Um, the Pleasant Ridge Drive Drainage, I finally got a response from the permitting engineer with the railway and there's permitting documents that the city is gonna have to sign. We've got a, uh, we've got to prepare the plans for that and we, we are, we're, we're underway on that, not fully complete. I hope to get it complete in the next two to three weeks and submit it, but there's like the, the railroad permitting fees are very expensive. It's like a thirty, thirty-five dollar for them to even look at a permit application. There's a right of entry fee of, you know, the, the city allowing a contractor to come work for them. There's some kind of, uh, like, basically maintenance agreement that the ci- this is the city infrastructure that's being put in on the right way. Uh, so anyways, just to let you guys know, there's, there's permitting process is, is underway. Um, uh, disappointing news, the old Burnham Highway, James Payton Boulevard intersection improvement project, so there's, in the twenty nineteen gas tax that got approved, that they had this annual grant funding. And we submitted that project and if you look at it from a safety standpoint, the cost benefit ratio of improvements in that project, it scores very highly. Um, I will say that the city has received funding through that program, you know, previously, so I don't know, but anyways, there's, there's three rounds of approvals for that money. There's one in March, April, there's one in June, and then there's one in September, October. And the first two have come and gone and the city did not get that project. So, I'm hoping it goes, I've, I've, you know, got one more chance and the mayor's reached out to, to, uh, some of the representatives that maybe can help with that, so. Um, Eastern Avenue Drainage, we've, we've kinda completed the report and we've done, we've made some recommendations on what can be done in the right of way of Eastern. Um, so that one, we're kinda rounding that one up and finishing that. And then Lake Louise Road Bridge Replacement is the next one. That is a really, really tough one because the crossing downstream of us at Alabama Avenue is causing a lot of issues. And really, right now, you could put a very big structure in there and you're gonna see very little improvement in flooding of Lake Louise Road. But, you know, there could be a chance in the future, if the county improves Alabama Avenue, you know, that's the bigger structure, puts a bridge in, whatever they do right there, then you don't have as much backup from that structure and then a bigger structure on Lake Louise would help. So, it's, you know, how much do, how, how much do you wanna spend or look at spending not knowing what's gonna happen downstream of it? It's a tough, we're, we're, we've looked at a few options, but we're not, we're not in a form right country and said this is probably what we need to do. Um, but that's, that's another reason why we're, we're working on it.
So, I don't know, I just, I need to say this out loud, but I'm gonna say it anyway, I just wish it was something we can do to convince the county to do something.
Yeah, and the issue with that, I mean, structurally, the, the bridge in Lake Louise needs to be fixed. I mean, it, it, whether the flooding exists or not, that, structurally, that bridge needs to be fixed.
Yes, it does.
And so, I mean, it, it's a, it's a very, very tough one.
Well, thank you, um, Michael.
Y'all have any more questions for him?
No, thank you for all the updates.
Thank you, Michael.
Thanks, Michael.
I need to, um, I need to go back to the one with the Kusa Valeriuski squad, we didn't mention is, who, who pays the insurance on you guys' speaking, speaking right now?
We pay them.
Okay, and you'll cover this above of the insurance as well?
We do.
Okay, that's, I forgot to ask that.
Oh, one more thing.
Okay.
And Gator, if y'all allow the purchase, the Gator Run, we will donate it to review to give department, red, board of education, whatever, where it's more suitable.
No.
Rather than those traded in, it can be used in a more suitable situation.
What's the trade-
If y'all would like.
What's the trade-in value of it?
Board of Education, we, we, we need something else. We in a bind now, if it works.
I mean, I know they just put it, they put it on that, uh, they'll, they can even around.
Well, let me ask-
That's right.
So, let me ask you, since you brought that question up, so did you factor in the price of what the new thing would cost with trading in the old thing? Oh, okay. Maybe you should-
I don't think it's gonna be the number, it's, it's not, not serious.
Alright, but that's all I wanted to ask about the, um, about the insurance. Okay, alright. Next, on the agenda, discussion of lease agreement for copiers, printers for all departments. Rico was the lowest quote of one thousand two hundred seventy dollars and twenty-seven cent per month with per copy prices at zero, zero, eight, two for black and zero, two, nine, seven for color.
Shannon? I'm confused, how many, how many printers and copiers is this?
This is eleven. It's seven color, four black and white, and it's twelve hundred dollars a month lease for this for sixty months and that includes all that.
That's what this was.
Orange, everything but type.
Yeah, it's seventy, seventy-seven thousand dollars for leasing something, so at the end of the lease, do we have a right to buy it?
Yes.
Okay, and, and the note in the, uh, in the agenda says it's due to lack of maintenance with tenant and no response to the request. Are we sure we're out of that agreement?
Yes, we bought those, all of those printers for a dollar each, uh, earlier in the year.
And you would plan to take those and go salvage or something?
We can sell them on, um, go deal with whoever and they're really good printers, we just can't get them to help fix them. Investigation's about one right now that is jamming constantly and we can't get them to help fix it.
How many quotes did you get there?
I got three quotes, Dex and Jane came in at two thousand twenty-seven dollars a month for the same number. Uh, Zerox came in at sixteen hundred dollars a month and their per copy prices were almost double what Rico came in at.
But it's all for the same services too, so the contracts on here-
Everything.
And you said there was eleven of them, Shannon, that didn't work or had something wrong with them?
Well, there's not that they have something wrong with them, it's just that the, we do have, they do have something wrong with them. We can't get them to come in and fix it. When you do replace all eleven of them, we get a much better price than if we just do one here and one there.
Okay, and that's a very good price on copier.
Yeah, it is.
For the maintenance, they supply everything, even the ton, always supplies the paper.
Y'all have any more questions on this?
Go, lady.
No, alright.
Next item discussion regarding painting of all exterior handrail stairs and two exterior doors. The quote from MJ Brooks and son is twenty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
We have twenty-one thousand in capital that was funded for that, but now they are the only ones that have the required insurance, the workman's comp insurance and all that. So, they're the only ones that we could get a quote from.
So, this is something that we've already approved for capital and you're just coming back to us just to get the-
Yeah, my twenty-five hundred dollars.
Twenty, twenty, where are you gonna pull it from?
That's-
Hold on, so you need, you need the twenty-three thousand additional?
No.
Oh, okay, that's what I'm saying.
Twenty-one thousand I had.
Uh-huh.
And this was twenty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven, twenty-two thousand eighty-eight, I'll say.
Okay, so, over here. And we need to do two items, because we've already budgeted for one dollar, one dollar amount.
Yeah, we just got five of them.
So, Shannon, where are you proposing we pull this other money from?
What? Um-
Is there, there should be some money left in capital, Shannon?
There is.
So, you're just gonna pull the total amount from capital?
Yes.
Alright, which number is it, just wanna make sure it's listed that way.
It is listed, I don't know where you wanna pull it from, because I'm not sure where you might wanna pull it from.
We need, just pull it from the same, um-
I agree, right.
Hold on, what, which number is it?
That is gonna be number one.
But it's more extensive than just painting, they don't have to paint blast and all that, right?
Yes, this is saving ice and everything.
I don't see it.
I don't see it, Shannon, but I-
Okay. I think we were just gonna discuss it and see if you wanna take-
Alright, so you're gonna put it on there so I can wait till next time? But we still, you know, we've set the precedent, this is how we've done it with all the capital, wanna make sure they come back and the dollar amount is the same, so we still need to put it on the agenda.
And I will put in here where it's capital.
Okay, so we're just gonna pull the total amount from capital.
Ms. Shannon, this will be done before the thirtieth of September, I'm sure. That way we don't roll over. Okay, yeah, because if not, we'll have to get a hold of the line item and all that. Yeah, okay, alright.
Alright, any questions on that? Alright, so that's it for all of our, um, work session action items.
You still got, um, there's some new business items.
These are the things that are gonna be, from, okay, I'm, I'm considering on the agenda.
That's right.
Yes, this is just what's gonna be on the agenda, so, the action that is necessary to approve the resolution for the fifty through eleven agreement, uh, authorizing the mayor to sign the contract, MJ Brooks for the pickleball court, pickleball basketball court, um, authorizing payments to Tim Emerson for remaining amount due. I know what I was gonna ask too, Shannon, is there any way, and we're gonna need to ask you about this, can we go ahead and take care of Yolanda's as well? Because we still, um-
Take care of what?
Yolanda's, um, burns the issue with her.
It's still, that's still open as well.
Yeah, so I think we need to, um, get that dollar amount on what is owed to her so we can go ahead and get that taken care of too on the next, um, agenda, Shannon.
Alright.
Alright, um, okay, so the resurfacing of boat dock lane.
We've gotta wait on, Mike will have the mayor.
For what?
We're gonna get more advice from Mike, we're gonna have the mayor see proposals. Wasn't sure what the reason of that was.
We're just gonna get proposals for that.
Oh, just for that amount?
Or resurfacing of both boat dock lane, that's what number two is.
What, how's it ordered?
That's fine.
Is it worded right or something?
Yes.
It is, kinda.
Okay. So, um, mayor's gonna sign the, um, contract for the copiers, the budget amendment for the, um-
I have a question about that as it's written in the agenda. In the agenda, it's a budget amendment for temporary employee, but it does not mention temp force. So, it should be specifically for temp force, we're not just authorizing a random hire. It has to go through temp force.
Make sure- Whatever it does have to run it.
Number six.
I'll add it, but can I add a comment in there? Civil service board only allows us to get temporary employees for temp force.
We still just wanna make sure it's written right, if I'm wrong, any confusion?
It's, uh, we can't go anywhere else.
Do we need to put a four weeks or five weeks in there? Does that need to be added in? Cause right now it doesn't say, it just says to go.
The money amount is for eight weeks to cover us just in case it goes over the four weeks.
It does, it does, it doesn't say that though, it just says six thousand four hundred and eighty dollars.
That's what I'm trying to see. That's what I'm trying to get across.
So, so, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not to exceed six thousand four hundred and eighty.
We don't, we don't get any, um, I don't even think, I think we just have to say, action is necessary to approve budget amendment for temporary employee in the mayor's office.
And they're not, not to exceed?
And, and how much you said it was an hour?
Fifteen, fifteen hours.
Twenty dollars?
Twenty, twenty-five.
Twenty, twenty-five.
Y'all didn't say that, y'all said fifteen dollars.
Yeah, and probably we'll get paid fifteen dollars, but then we'll pay temp force, the twenty, twenty-five.
Alright. Um, so, I'm gonna be winging it when I get to this one. Okay.
There's not too many students, except for-
Alright, just wanna make sure, alright, so hold on. Or never look at all of them.
Number seven.
What? I think that, I think it's over. I'll be, I'll be winging it, y'all letting know if you know.
You, uh-
Okay, um, so the next thing is action is necessary to approve the budget amendment for Alexander Hyde invoices in the amount of, and I, I got this, cause Wayne, it's, it's stuff on here for you, it's stuff on here for Wayne too.
It's where she talks with Wayne, with Aiden.
And when you signed off on these, so you, you approved these invoices we got, right? Okay. Alright, so the next one is the special event license for Madison Lights. I didn't even ask her what the, um, event was for, shame on me. And then we got the accounts payable and payroll. Anybody got anything else on the work session? Anybody got anything else on the work session?
That's it. One, one other question about the agenda, isn't there still one set of minutes we have not approved?
Yes, there is, and we are researching those, it's from the June seventeenth meeting, and there is something wrong in the minutes, and, um, we are going back through the video and everything.
Also too, um, there was a binder out front too, where we were keeping, um, minutes for twelve months in there, so people don't even have to like come and worry y'all, they can just come take pictures or whatever of the minutes, are we still having that? Cause we had a binder out front, and we kept.
I've never seen one.
Yeah, we kept up to twelve months worth of minutes in it, and we would just replace it each time a month of minutes came. So we were keeping at least twelve months worth of minutes, and people could just come and take pictures with their phone, or write down whatever they wanted to write, and that just kept them from, I mean, it just kept them from worrying y'all about, well, not worrying y'all, but just asking y'all about minutes when they had access. Alright, um, y'all are going to the thing, you wanna take a break? I'm just gonna dive into it. You good? Alright, so I'm gonna go ahead, we have, oh, what was I saying? Don't let me say it. Alright, we're gonna go ahead and, um, call the minutes of order at six eleven P.M. New row call vote, um, Laura Ballow heat, dear Lee Perriman, Dave Roar, Asher Pollard. Alright, identification was given by Coach Hubbard, and now we're gonna stand for the plate.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every and justice for all.
Mayor Hodges, you have a report for us tonight?
Love the taking, I think Michael covered everything that we really need to, uh, here.
I know, it was so exciting, you don't wanna, you don't wanna talk about it again, that Peyton and Wes is exciting. Alright, so, um, okay, no report from the mayor. Any motion to adopt or amend the agenda?
Motion to adopt.
And second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any names? Motion passes. Next item, action, um, to approve the regular city council, um, meeting held on July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, any motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any names? Motion passes. Next item, approved minutes of regular work session held, held on July first, twenty twenty-five.
Motion.
And second?
Sure.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any names? Motion passes. Next item, approved minutes of regular work session held on July fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, any motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any names? Motion passes. Now, the old business, action that is necessary to approve the all premises retail beer and wine license for Ross Deviney at one zero zero one North Broadway Avenue, and eight oh four West Fort Williams Street, second time, any motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any names? Motion passes. Alright, new business, action that is necessary to approve resolution number four nine dash two zero two five, section five through eleven agreement for services for fiscal year twenty twenty-six through twenty twenty-eight, and update title, six policy for transportation, any motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any names? Motion passes. Next item, action that is necessary to approve resolution number five zero dash twenty twenty-five, authorizing the mayor to sign the construction contract with M.J. Brooks and Son for pickleball slash basketball court project, any motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
I heard a wait. All in favor?
Yeah.
Any names? Motion passes. Next item, action that is necessary to approve resolution number fifty-one dash twenty twenty-five, authorizing payments to Tim Everson for remaining amount due. Do we have to have an amount?
It's in the resolution.
It is.
Alright.
Motion.
Alright, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any names? Motion passes. Next item, action that is necessary, necessary to authorize the mayor to seek proposals for the resurfacing of Bo Dot Lane, any motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any names? Motion passes. Next item, action that is necessary to approve resolution number fifty-two dash twenty twenty-five, authorizing the mayor to sign a sixty-month lease agreement with Rico for printers, copiers for the department at cost of one thousand two hundred seventy dollars and twenty-seven cent per month. The lease covers delivery, installation, and setup with the maintenance covering everything except paper. This is due to the lack of maintenance with cannon and no response to maintenance requests, any motion?
Motion.
Second?
I think you get.
I got Laura for the first.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any names? Motion passes. Alright, y'all let me know if I get this wrong. Next item, action that is necessary to approve budget amendment for a temporary temp force employee at twenty dollars and twenty-five cent per hour, dollar amount not to exceed six thousand four hundred and eighty dollars from G L zero one zero dash five one one dash four one zero nine zero dash zero 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 to regular pay to G L zero one zero dash five one one dash four one zero nine one dash zero zero zero. Any motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any names? Motion passes. Next item, action that is necessary to approve budget amendment for Alexander Hyde invoices in the amount of nine thousand nine hundred sixty-seven dollars and seventy-five cent from G L zero one zero dash five one one dash four one five eight zero dash zero zero zero. Other professional fees to G L zero one zero dash five one one dash four one five four zero dash zero zero zero. Professional services could be fees, any motion?
Motion.
I heard Laura, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any names? Motion passes. Next item, um, action that is necessary to approve special event license for Madison Lights, the event is November first, twenty twenty-five, at Noble Park, and Madison has completed her special event license, um, paperwork, any motion by council member?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any names? Motion passes. Next item, action that is necessary to approve the payment of accounts payable invoices for July fiscal year twenty twenty-five in the amount of two hundred nineteen thousand twenty dollars and fifty-nine cent, any motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Any names? Motion passes. Next item, action that is necessary to approve July twenty twenty-five payment on the amount of five hundred fifty-five thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars and seventy-seven cent, any motion by council member?
Motion.
I heard Asher first this time, second?
Second.
Alright, Laura, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any names? Motion passes. So I do have a, um, letter from our attorney, we are gonna go into an executive session, um, after this. How long you think will be an executive session?
Um, Laura, in just twenty minutes or so.
Okay, so I will, um, go ahead and read this, um, letter, and then we'll also let anyone who wants to address the council to go ahead and hear that before we go into executive session, and we're only gonna come back to close the council meeting, there won't be any, um, further business discussed. So it says, dear council members, pursuant to section thirty-six dash twenty-five, A dash seven, A three code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, as amended, I am writing this letter to inform this council that one of the matters to be discussed in the regular scheduled city council meeting this date with me as city attorney for the city of Silicon Valley involves a discussion of legal ramifications of and legal options for pending litigation controversies not yet being litigated, but eminently likely to be litigated, or even likely to be litigated if the governmental body pursues a proposal course of action. In my opinion, that this council should pass a motion allowing state executive session to be conducted for the above stated reason. And I have a list of people who will, um, be in that executive session, and it's, um, the council, the mayor, and our city attorney, correct? Alright, so at this time, is there anyone who would like to address the council? Remember, no action to be taken at this meeting, please come to the microphone, state your name and address, for the record, prior to addressing the council. Is there anyone, come on, Ms. Rita. Just state your, um, first and last name and your address.
Uh, hi, uh, to mayor and the city council. To all of you. Okay, so at five twenty, I heard, I'm in district two, first of all, my name is Rita Walker, okay?
What's your address?
Say your address, Ms. Rita.
Two point three moving, so about three five one five zero. Okay, so, um, I did hear Ms. Nick at five twenty said that, and the whole bones that you all was gonna do the road roll.
Yes, one street is being paid, which are here.
Okay, so, but I have one question. So are all these jobs on this list, who made the list, and how did they bypass wooded first place? Because we had them worth roll over there, we had a lot of sink holes, they came in, they patched here, then another hole come in, they patched here, we had roads all the way up the road, all the way up, and for some reason, who, who got out the list? So who made the list, and who was the list maker? I'm just curious, that's the only thing I wanna know.
Lord, super, superintendent, speak superintendent, along with Michael Weiss, our engineer, who's been looking at these boats over two years, planning this paving project.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, but our road's been messed up for way longer than two years.
Yeah, it has been messed up for a long time, Ms. Rita, that's why I'm glad that it's gonna get paved in this cycle, so.
Okay, and I appreciate it, and I really wanted to come up here and say thank you. That's, that was my main reason to come up here, I came up here to tell you thank you, because I heard just, I rolled out of time, five twenty, so, thank you.
We've been up, we've been up here finding to make sure all of our stuff, taking care of all of us, been fighting for seven streets.
So I hope in the future that we look at all the neighborhoods, surrounding neighborhoods, I mean, some of the neighborhoods look really bad. I was one of them, okay, y'all, so I'm gonna start getting more often, uh, that's my thing, since a lot of things don't happen for the right for me, but there's a lot of things going on, and we do need a lot of help in the city, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rita.
Good to see you, Ms. Rita.
Is there anyone else who would like to come up and address the council, just remember, no action will be taken at this time? Going once?
Going twice.
Alright, so, um, I need a motion to go into, um, executive session.
I make the motion, we go into executive session.
Alright, I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Alright, time to start executive session, it's six twenty-two.